The time is 6:00 PM. We're here at City Hall 215 South Ash Street. May I have a roll call, please?
Yes, ma'am. Mayor Mary Moore.
Present.
Mayor Pro Temtunan Hernandez. Councilmember Richard Gander.
Present.
Councilmember Sonia Hernandez.
Fair.
Councilmember Brenda DeVine. Councilmember Robert Villal.
Present.
Councilmember Robo Segovia.
Here.
And Councilmember Davina Rodriguez.
We have a quorum, so let us stand for our initial questions. As well as questions.
Dear Moore, I ask everyone gathered here today to take time and reflect on the good things in their life and to please help us as we move forward in this election for me with City Manager for the City of Pierceville. And we accept God's guidance to help us choose the most wise person that can help further the projects of the City of Pierceville and guide us into a bigger, brighter, productive economic future. In the name of the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen.
Ladies and gentlemen, citizens of the United States of America, and in the republic for which it stands, my nation under God, indivisible, with a routine justice for all.
I would like to say welcome to our candidates for City Manager. If you could just stand and say your names, please. Starting with you, sir.
My name is Andy Johnston.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening. My name is Melissa Landy. I'm from Brownsville, Texas, and I grew up in Pleasantville, Texas.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
My name is Fred Reyes. I live in... I live in... Not from...
My name is Brian Athaliah from San Antonio, Texas.
Awesome. Welcome, welcome. Okay, that's it. Just four. Okay, awesome. So, we're going to move on to our old business. We're going to move to five, to our new business, 5A, because we want to hear about this independent audit before we make a decision on the other 4A. So, item 5A, discussion and possible action to issue a request for qualification for an independent auditor to conduct an audit of TML claims for Polo Patino Park expenses. This is an actual item need to entertain. Motion to discuss, please?
Motion.
You have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Madam Mayor, councilmembers, this was previously identified in previous meetings to go ahead and put on the agenda for the request of qualification for an independent auditor to go over the both of the new park TML expenditures. This was brought with Mr. Segovia and approved by others. So, this is a line item. We have directed our costs, our initial costs, to TML. Everything that goes with TML is already something that they ought to make sure falls under the insurance claims, that we're not pre-negotiating other terms that don't fall into what was previously approved. So, the recommendation here would be to not... This would be a cost that the city... For the city to go ahead and do this independent audit that's already been conducted by TML with their policies and procedures to go ahead and... That are already approved of project. But it has been presented to you guys on this agenda, so the discussion and action item is based on y'all's approval. So, it's okay, y'all have to discuss if you want and discuss the matters of your own.
So, you're saying everything that was spent already has been audited by Texas Municipal League, the insurance adjusters?
For the initial, what was initially done has been permitted to TML. And I can show you exactly what was presented, what we previously identified, which was the skate park and the... So, this was the... This was pre-fulfillable, and again, this was February 28, 2018. This is when everything's been happened, again, happened two years. So, this was what was presented to us to go ahead and identify what we actually wanted with the project. And in this, it identified everything that the Neighborhood Center offered as a different placement, a simple apartment, support, all those different facilities that this Neighborhood Center tear down. And we identified what our options were to rebuild before meeting with TML. And then this, of course, was our both of the new park, which you can see the building off to the right was what would burn down both of the new park. It did not affect it in any way. So, that building right to the right corner was what was lost. And then what we wanted to identify to TML was our priority for the both of the new parks, which didn't tear down, it was the actual building. So, we had identified that these would be the improvements and a possibility to include in regards to the Neighborhood Center tearing down. And it identified the skate park and the splash pad, the pavilion cookout, the different areas of playground, the walking trail, improved lighting, fencing, improved ADA restaurants and additional parking. Now, again, your top priorities are one, two, and then it goes down. And then you can also identify that it is to possibly include. So, as we were getting the funds and as we're extending it, these were next to follow in line. Priority number two, which was something that we had to do because it was the building itself that burned down, was building a new City Hall, the new building, which would be across the street. And because it held municipal board at one time, that was the main focus for us to go ahead and prioritize to encompass that into the program. And to also facilitate a client facility for City Council to use such as was going on. And additional office spaces and storage. That was everything that encompassed the previous building before. So, we're trying to... That was the main focus of getting that replacement cost and moving it over here. So, both of the new parks is something in our mission, but the building was something that needed to be instructed. And then, of course, we have the layout. This was something that we went out and sought with the possibilities of property that would be able... Would be available for our use, which would be in conjunction with the City Hall for easy mobility of citizens coming back and forth to the main part of City Hall. And then the next steps would, of course, be the demolition of the Neighborhood Center and then seeking approval for TML. So, these were all the initial phases before even moving forward. Again, the claim started, it burned down on February 2018, and this was all initial before doing anything, before demolition, before moving forward, before... And it was provided to us for approval for City Council to go ahead and provide that guidance and direction in order to move forward to present to TML. And this was approved to go ahead, the idea of both of the new park with the skate park, the playground area, the parking lot, everything over there, and then, of course, the building was the next. So, that was the initial of everything that we encompassed. And of course, TML... Let me show you this next one. Very few more quick, but we'll find these. Once it was approved, well, before it was approved, because this was February 21, 2018, because as soon as you're... You have something, a claim is done, they give you your actual cash value of what is presented for that building. So, automatically, what was identified for TML based on our costs, we received 1.03, 793, and 69 cents. That was our actual value payment. So, I'm going to go on to the next one. So, there's a total payment, and there is a breakdown. The assesses, the deductible that we pay was the 2,500, so that takes out of the full cost. Your $260,006.02 for the demolition, which was incorporated in the TML. So, we didn't go out for bid. TML said, "These are the people that are going to do it, and this is what the cost is." So, it was a cut. The actual structure value was 7.80, $87.67. And then we had contents of $5,000, I believe it was for the tree, and then $50,000 for the contents. So, your total initial payment for the actual value was 1.103, $793.69 to include contents, the two contents on there. And then it breaks it down even further. There's a lot of stuff in there. It's like a whole packet of everything that comes with the claim. So, I did reach out to TML in regards to our previous discussions and where we're at, what we're going to do, the whole background, viewing the direction towards that building, whether we want to move forward or not. This was response from Melanie Chris, is the... I have one more question. She is our TML representative. And in pursuit of our conversation that we discussed last time after the meeting, I identified that we weren't able to approve the annex building across the street due to some questions and concerns. And then I had identified the possibility of a plan being pre-negotiated with TML. What would that action be? What would it look like? This was basically her email to me, and it states here, "You can read along." As pursuant to our phone conversation today, I'm emailing to advise this plan that was presented to Riskful, which I previously showcased earlier, by the city, was the only plan that was approved. Use of the remaining replacement cost fund by any other means beyond was Riskful approved in mind per. This was a special circumstance proposal that had to gain approval from Riskful management, and due to this, we must abide with approval. Approval plan has been... Please let me know if you have any other questions and concerns. Now, again, that plan was done in February 2018 as that presentation. Let me show you. And like I said, just so you know, this is our representative, and this was back and forth conversations with previous city manager as we went forward. You can see the email was back in June of 2018, so that was previous. And in order to move forward with anything, like I said, with the demolition, with the project of both Patino, anything going further, we had to have this approval. And that's what they had came down to go ahead and give us a in-person approval to go ahead and congratulate us and celebrate with us. And that's whenever we took action, it started with the project and places. And she had stated, "In order for us to go ahead and..." Let me see if this is near. I have another email. "In order for us to go ahead and possess those recoverable values, we have to approve a plan for this City Annex building. As of right now, there will be no other funding." So, that's where all that sits. And like I said, they do have the initial. I'm going to show you this new email. I have these letters. Okay, so this is your next step, and this is everything you started going through. The insurance claim, what the response means from TML, replacement number... The Neighborhood Center option as was, and we don't get the recoverable cost, or we can go ahead and put back the building, which is on the same location as we got approved by TML. This was our actual building that had got burned down, so it is a building, and that is exactly what we're doing across the street, is providing a building. And those were the costs. So, the Neighborhood Center is set 2.105, 875, 70, even though we only received the actual cash value of 706 minus deductibles and permit fees. There's a little spreadsheet that comes with the check of TML, so it identifies all of the costs. The calculated depreciation for the structures are 1.2, which is something that we'll be recovering for that additional cost. That was the estimation. Again, here is your... What is this TML response mean? No, this whole protocol should be a small city would use the actual cash value payment to begin construction of the replacement facility as was, given where it was and what the purpose was. City would pay the remainder of the replacement cost upfront, so there would be no depreciation. City would then be reimbursed to the full recoverable cost, actual cash value and depreciation once the facility is completed. This all assumes that the city would rebuild the exact same facility on the exact same footprint. So, that was what the TML was... That was our initial. This is what you have to do. But because we proposed that plan, and that was approved, that allowed us to do something different, something to go ahead and move forward with. And again, here is the Neighborhood Center. As was, they conducted all these different functions for the city. And then, of course, what were our options? We had numerous discussions with TML going back and forth before ever moving forward. Question is, the city required to go the same? That was something that we wanted to know. We're in the same location. TML's response is maybe if the city provides a plan that shows having to meet the same needs in multiple buildings, facilities, and multiple locations. So, that's what we ended up providing in that other presentation that I provided before. Yes, sir?
I just want to interject, just a few seconds. This form that you gave us is very, very, very vague.
Okay.
What I would have liked to see was to list all the vendors and give me a running total of what's being spent. Otherwise, it can be left to your imagination.
Okay.
When you put various vendors, how much you paying? What amount did you pay for that vendor? I have no idea, other than I just have the total. I think that would have been much, much more beneficial than what you gave us Saturday.
Okay.
And I think Republic wouldn't be in this predicament at this point if that would have been done initially.
And because of the timeframe, because of everything that I have to look up, that's because that memorandum was tied up. But we can definitely have something...
Itemized.
...expanded out, because like I said, the sheet that I showed you, I have to open up everything and see what mislabeled, what those vendors are, and whose group was what, and what that contributed to. So, it's more extensive than that, and that's why that was given to you within such a short time. But I understand what you're saying, and I do agree. It's up to your interpretation on if you feel like there's a lot of information being messed up.
Exactly. A lot of things are being missed, or... Exactly. I mean, it's like the pavement, the pavement over there. There was country numbers. Oh, no, we didn't pay that much to that guy, or so on and so forth.
Yes.
But if we had everything in black and white, we had a running total, we had exactly our invoices from these people, then we wouldn't be in this predicament right now today.
Okay. Yeah, so that's exactly something that... And that's going to take time to... I can't just do it within a week. It takes some time to go ahead and open up everything and look at everything, especially because of the position. But we will definitely get something, and I do agree that it doesn't provide that much transparency. It's true. And we can go ahead and correct that. So, if that's something that you want for me to do, I will get that done. Probably not coming up, but hopefully coming up. So, we can sit down and look at everything. And my position, I can see where everything is going, and I understand what the numbers with the vendors, I know what number of vendors are, but I have to input everything. It doesn't just come out like that on the system. And even if I do print it out as a vendor, you can't see what that vendor... It just says PVC something or another. It doesn't tell you. I have to tell you that it is a waterline project for the splash pad, because it's line item for line item. But I can get all of that done for you for more transparency, and we can have that over to you guys.
So, you're saying about three weeks?
Yes, three weeks. Is that okay? Or...
He has a question.
Yes, sir.
Question or...
Counsel.
Question or motion?
Which one? You raise your hand, so...
Well, I have a motion, but we have to previously discuss it.
So, you have no question?
No.
Okay. Any other... Wait, you need to see if any other questions?
I don't have a question, but I...
Comment.
I'm a comment. I would like to see more detailed expense reports and such, so that we can understand maybe the nature of the request for item 5A. And I think it's... It'll give us a better idea of whether we need to move forward with an auditor and so forth. I mean, we've got to see in-house...
Yes, and...
Paperwork, inside, in-house information before. It's the way I...
Absolutely. And if ever in doubt, I mean, that's the direction is to address issue internally before going outside. Like I said, this memorandum was given just because it was put on the agenda real quickly, and I didn't have the time to go ahead and open up everything, but that will be addressed, and then that will clear up a lot of questions in regards to what expenditure or what. So, we'll definitely move forward and kind of improve that.
For the record, Councilwoman Trevino arrival at 6:20. Alrighty, so, we want to table this item, or you want to make another one?
I have a motion. May I make a motion that on the focus on the proposal of the audit of TML insurance claim number 00000007285 in the amount of $1,153,793.69. The scope of the audit, the scope of the audit is the competitive bidding laws broken procedures for awarding bid services done at Polo Patino Park and review and consider deceptive, if any, on proposal for TML claim. Advertisement in the TML website and local paper for the RFP audit, RFP should be turned in to City Clerk Cristo Garcia and sealed envelopes. Advertisement as required by law and award proposal at the next council meeting and special meeting after legal notice given. That's my motion there.
One second, ma'am. There's a motion and a table, which... Your wording... Help me out, counsel. It was quite a bit compared to you.
Just to clarify, your motion is to go out for RFQs. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
I have it out here for the record.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor, by short hands? All opposed?
I don't understand.
Okay. We're in the process of... Councilman Segovia wants an audit of all the expenditures for the park, which will cost the city a great deal of money because he wants a forensic audit.
I understand that part.
Okay. However, TML per our city interim city manager explained that most of... All the fundings have been audited by them, so we don't... Some don't find it necessary to go out for this audit. So...
But, ma'am, it's the...
Or the RFQs for the audit.
It's the laws. Because I have the question that Councilman Hernandez and Councilwoman... Whether I have? I have. I did open record request, okay?
That's...
That's the reason for the audit. I cannot go out and accuse... Okay, I'll give you an example. I'm giving an example right here. You have... You have WS Welby. WS Welby, it doesn't give you an amount, and it says approved by CM.
Okay, so...
There was no bidding process.
We understand...
Yes.
We understand your... What you're saying.
So, just to clarify, if this line item were to be tabled, then it gives an opportunity of Josie to run that extended report so that you guys are able to be better identified with line item descriptions, where the money was applied to. And that'll put you in a better position to make the decision if you need to go out for an RFQ to contract an independent auditor. So, you would... The motion on the table is to already go out for the RFQ proposals, but if you table this line item, it gives you more time to get a better...
Understanding.
Yeah, basically, a better description of the money. And then, and then at that point, you can make the decision to go out for the RFQ. So, it's not like you can't come back to requesting...
And, Councilman Hernandez, the question... The concern that you have is not the audit that they're saying that TML is approved. That's not the question. The question is the laws that were broken, okay, during the process of the bidding process.
But the agenda says...
Exactly.
For the request.
For the request, yes. Yeah.
Exactly.
Exactly right. We need to look at the agenda item, and then we need to decide how to proceed.
We've already talked about this twice already.
So, there was a one, two, three...
Well, there's no detailed discussion about this. We need detailed reports and...
I know, we've asked for it. And we're going to ask for it for the third time. And somebody will get it.
With all respect, I have it. You know, I have it because I've done my research on open record requests.
So, there was a four... Let's take the vote again.
I have four is Davina, Robo, and Sonia, and against Brenda, Robert, and Nina, who I have right now.
And Gander, as well.
I'm not... I would say, let's get the paperwork. I don't have copies that he has.
You have the last one.
So, it didn't pass.
He voted motion or he has a motion? Against.
I want to table this item until we get the proper documents or review.
Okay, there's a...
That all council can make determination of what we need to do.
There's a motion on the table.
So, again...
All in favor for table? All opposed? We will table this item.
And to clarify on that particular subject, TML auditors have reviewed the expenditures...
No, they haven't.
...for the initial bidding for the park.
No, they... Excuse me, Brian.
For the skate park, they have the identification of the ramp and the playground equipment. The property that we purchased, they're just waiting on to the approval of the bid for the annex.
Okay. And that is the only thing that has not been audited by TML? Everything else has been?
No, that's everything that has been. Everything else has been.
Davina, you want to speak? Wait.
Okay, so, I have a question. I understand what you're saying, and what I understood is that you said everything has been approved pre... Pre-purchase. Have y'all submitted all the vendors for this park? Have y'all submitted for all the playground expenses? Who's... Have you told TML that y'all are over budget? Have you done all that, or not yet?
I have talked to TML, and in regards to the playground equipment and the ramp.
Okay, but our question is, have they gotten audit of everything after the fact?
No, they haven't.
Okay, that's...
But in order to release funds and move forward, because what was approved was put into the park, but what was approved was a city...
Yes. I understand that. What we're trying... What we're trying to find out is that we're over budget $165,000. Then we get this paper that says selective members, or whatever it says. Okay, we're over budget $165,000 that the council never went back and amended to approve vendors coming in. Y'all say there was bids. We don't know if they were sealed. The council approved $400,000 for that park, okay? In order to go over the $400,000, just because we have the money,[1725.41] In order to go over the $400,000, just because we have the money, the council still needs to get amended. So y'all have to come, the previous city manager should have came to the council and said, "Council, we're at $400,000? We still need $165,000? What would y'all like me to do?"
And that was on the presentation for priority.
Yes, oh, we didn't go back. We didn't go back. The council.
And it was along management's direction to go ahead and emphasize and move forward. When it's still bid is for $50,000 or more. If you mess them $50,000, it's management to go ahead and move forward with those remaining small problems.
But my thing is, we went over $165,000, the council never amended that. And I know they gave directive from the management to spend $400,000. They did not give directive to spend over $165,000. And that's all I'm saying. Unless y'all, because we weren't here, unless y'all gave the directive, "Tink, go ahead. If you go over $400,000, your management, you do as you please." I seriously doubt that. So that's our question. That's why we are upset with the park.
This will be discussed more in detail. We're going to move on to four A, discussion of possible action to award general contract bid for the City of Piersol Annex Building project funded through TML insurance claim. This is a previously tabled item, so we need to entertain a motion to untable, please. And the second. All in favor?
Madam, your council member, this item was previously tabled in regards to going ahead and approving the award for the contract for the annex building. Again, if you'd like me to show you the email from TML for the response, because I did get with them with our holdup on moving forward with the annex building and understanding whether or not we can go back to TML and ask for approval of something else. This was what was presented to me via email. This was the only thing that was approved to move forward and in order for us to review those recoverable costs, the annex building, depending on who you want to award, it needs to be presented to TML in order for them to go ahead and release the recoverable costs of the building. With that being said, this is being placed back on the agenda to go ahead and award the contractor for the proposed annex building in which we are already in the direction of moving forward previously and going ahead and LNB providing the blueprint for the annex building across the street. So they've already done their part in correcting that blueprint for that annex building, which was previously approved, to go ahead and construct. This is the base bid. LNB was able to give me this feedback in which they found that the base bid of $949,117, Mr. Wells, from Wells Construction, has the approved bid to go ahead and move forward on their project. And I know it was a previous, I don't know if y'all have y'all's paperwork from the previous tabled items on what the annex building was going to look like, but that was the bid, $449,117 was the recommendation. And here is the, these were the three vendors that we had. Sorry. So these were the three bids that we received. LNB, Maissa Ovebend, these vendors were present once we opened it up. Gonzalez, Delagard, and Associates, $1,189,721. Wells Construction, $949,117. And Waterman Construction, $1,396,000. These were all the bids and of course, with Wells Construction, lower bid, and they had previous projects that they were conducting with similar range of what we were going with. And LNB did contact them to make sure they got all the specifications correct, if there was any other questions or anything that might take different changes in the cost. Everything came out good and full acknowledgement of what those design plans encompassed and they were, they again were confident in the price that they provided us. So LNB did provide this recommendation to go ahead and award to Wells Construction for $949,117 for the RFQ.
So the, the question that's on the table, I'll get to in just a second, is where, are you guys wanting to wait for the next meeting so we can hammer out the itemized expenditures? Or we can go concurrently, let them start the building while all this is participating because we have $1.2 million on the table that TML will not release until we approve their already approved plan? So that's the decision that has to be made tonight. Yes, sir?
You know, I think that since they off-tabled the audit, I'm trying to give the backup of all the expenditures that have been made over the amount that was exceeded in Polo Patino Park. It's only fair to table this item, you know, till we come back and look at the other issues that are coming before us.
And that's the thing, I just want to be on record for that. I don't want to make another $165,000 mistake. We already paid engineer $85,000 for whole blueprints. You know, we could have asked another engineer to give us a bid. $85,000, that's a lot of money. School paid $50,000 for a whole new school. So we really have to, that's a lot of money. We all need that building. You know, location, it was a neighborhood center, not a city hall, so we've got to keep that in mind. We need the building because it's money there that we have to build, but we cannot make that same, $165,000 is not $100. It's a lot of money. So I think we should table this item since we tabled the first part.
But how long ago were those, the plans or what?
Within the year. I left them at home. In Natalia and Piersol was doing an addition and they paid $32,000. And that was for what again? An addition with 20 bathrooms. When you, the engineering, the bathroom, the kitchen, they, that's what you're paying the most for. Those are, that's when you need an engineering for, how to do the plumbing, electricity and all that. $85,000, that's a lot of money. We went over $165,000 at Polo Patino with no engineer, okay? We paid $85,000 per plant. We haven't gone over.
It's similar to me.
And Polo Patino, we still haven't done the bathrooms. And we're over $165,000. All we want is to look at it, review it, let's not make the same mistake. Nobody's saying, we're not saying we don't want the building. We need to make sure it's done right. And location, I'm not for it. City hall, not for it. But it's there, it's done, we've got to do it, but we can't spend $165,000 over. Can't, can't do that again. We tabled the first item, we should table the second.
Comments? Well, I think that LNB is not here tonight, so.
Yes, they had another decision.
We cannot elaborate on details as to the project. And so I would like to be able to ask questions on the project of LNB as best counsel. So I'm going to table this up.
A second time? All in favor? Motion here is an exonerating. So we are at item six, executive session, importance with Texas government, chapter code five by one, subchapter D, six A, interviews applicants for permanent city manager. So we need to entertain a motion going to executive session.
Motion.
All in favor? Time is 6:38. Alright, we need to entertain a motion to return from executive session.
To return.
All in favor? The time is 9:34. First of all, I want to say thank you to all the candidates. You guys were amazing, amazing. So moving on to open session, seven eight, discussion and consider appointing a city manager subject to negotiating a contract. This is an action item. We need to entertain a motion to discuss, please.
I'm going to say this, sir.
All in favor? Discussion may proceed.
Any discussion? No discussion? Okay, I would like to make a motion to, first of all, thank the, all the applicants that applied. Y'all were fantastic, just like the mayor said. But I would like to make a motion to direct the city manager. We have selected two applicants for the city manager position and we would like as an interim city manager to get in contact with them and for the other ones that did not make the cut to go ahead and send them a letter.
We've selected two finalists.
Two finalists, I'm sorry. Two finalists, yes.
To come back on.
On what date?
The regular city council meeting?
The regular city council date.
A second time.
All in favor? Motion here is unanimous. Thank you guys very much.